Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. August 23rd, 2021, in the Wacoitt Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Broadcast live on Local Channel 18, stream live on the Town of Mashpee website, At 6:30, we'll convene the meeting and open session. To start off, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like a moment of silence. Approval of the following Monday, August 9th, minutes?
Motion, we approve the Monday, August 9th, regular session minutes.
I'll second that.
Roll call, John?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Public comment. Richard Klein?
Richard Klein, 205 Ashers Path West. Madam Chairman and Board Members, I'd like to address this to Ms. Chairman. I would appreciate it if you spoke to the Chairman of the Planning Board. He's not allowing public comments. We have some good ideas. We've got some good thoughts that we feel we can help him with some of the decisions that have to be made through the Planning Board. Would be greatly appreciated if you could speak to him about it, because with him not allowing us to speak tells me that he is biased towards this project. Want to say thank you.
Thank you. Ernest Barrows.
I just wanted to talk and bring up a couple of quick notes, and I know-
Ernie, would you state your name and address first, please?
Ernie Barrows, 201 Schumert Road.
Thank you.
And I've been in here many times for the pickleball park down there, the noise and everything else that's going on. I've asked to be on the agenda for today, never got there, but I did get a chance to talk to Mr. Collins, and he said there was something in the works of taking care of that park and going through the noise and everything, and I guess you guys are aware of it, or supposed to be going to a meeting on it. And I just want you to know that I'm going to watch that closely, see what goes on. And I'm just kind of curious why nobody's- I get to pay for my recreation sticker also, and I just wondering why with the last time I was in here, I got a little chance to think about it, and they said that the taxpayers didn't think, they didn't think the taxpayers were going to pay or want to pay for doing anything more at that park. And I'm just kind of curious, after three and a half years of having that park in there, I have to pay every year for my recreational sticker to go down to any of the beaches or anything else, any of the parks that I need to go in around here. And I want to know why nobody has to pay to go to that park. And you complained that you didn't have enough money, or the taxpayers weren't going to pay for doing anything at that park, where already you've probably missed tens of thousands of dollars of just getting a recreational sticker there. And with the amount of cars there, probably could even be more. And I, you know, there's a bunch of different questions that I wanted answered over the past couple of years that I never got answered, but I'm just kind of curious why that is. And I'm kind of looking forward to hearing from Mr. Collins on what's going on with the process of taking care of this noise after three and a half years of nothing happening to cure that noise. And I'd appreciate it if something was done, where maybe getting a recreation sticker, where we can get some of that $500,000 or so dollars that we spent for that park, a little bit in return, and maybe help take care of that noise, because obviously money's not the issue, if that's the case. And I appreciate your concern to that, and I'm looking forward to seeing a little something more done in the next couple of months, as I check in with Mr. Collins. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Barbie?
Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive, Madam Chair and Board. I just wanted to remind everybody about two things that are happening on Thursday. One is the public meeting at Falmouth High School at 6 o'clock on the gun range. So it's open to everyone, just not just Falmouth people. But the other thing is, starting Thursday, the Medical Reserve Corps of Cape Cod is going to start doing COVID testing at the fairgrounds, and they're going to be doing it every Thursday and Sunday from 4:00 to 6:00. So it's the first time they've been doing this for months, but we're really glad that we're going to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, discussion and possible action in regard to October 18th, 2021 Annual Town Meeting. Town Moderator, Jeremy Carter. Good evening, Jeremy.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Board. Nice to see everyone. So Wayne Taylor called me and indicated that the Board was considering or had decided to have the October meeting outside. I made it clear my wishes. I think I have some control under the statute. You guys can pick the place, but whether I want to hold the meeting or recess it, I think, is up to me. And I am dead set against having the meeting outside in October, for the following reasons.
Why?
It's going to be cold, it's going to be dark. It's not going to warrant the people that came into the first meeting we had back in May, and I understand that that was a big issue, and that was well attended, 400, 500 people. I think we're going to have a regular turnout of about 120 to maybe 200 people. Most of those people are elderly. You're now talking October versus May, where it will be dark, it will be uneven ground, it will be cold. It was cold in May. It's going to be cold in October. I don't think a lot of people are going to come out. I think it was difficult in hearing and positioning people. I think it was, you know, for the reasons why we had it in May for the sewer, perfect. It was good, good choice. But for the other reasons, you got October is a totally different animal, it's going to be cold, I'm repeating myself. Those are the reasons. And I think it's, you know, I've been doing this for, I don't know, 20 years. I know who comes to town meeting, and the people who come to town meeting are going to have a very difficult time in October to present their things. I don't see any reason why we can't have it inside.
Anyone have questions for Jeremy? John?
Well, I mean, with all due respect, I don't understand your concerns. We made a decision because we thought, we were considering the concerns and safety of everybody that may attend. So in my opinion, and I think, and I want to speak to the Board, but I think the outdoor, I mean, obviously outdoors over indoors, yeah, if they want to attend, and if somebody doesn't want to attend an indoor town meeting because of their concerns for their safety, there's the reasons why you hold it outdoors. If we hold it outdoors, it gives everybody the opportunity without the concern of, I don't feel safe if it's indoors.
So, John, we've had two town meetings inside, in the height of the pandemic. Not an issue. We had it outside in the springtime because the auditorium or the gymnasium wouldn't have fit 400 or 500 people, and it would have been outside, outside in another room. Would have been a disaster. So the outside made sense. That day in May, where it's lighter, was cold. The people, you got to look at the demographics who come to these meetings, and the people who come, if their majority are elderly, they're going to be vaccinated, so they're not going to be concerned about being inside versus outside. And they're going to have an opportunity to be able to hear better, see better, and a more safety factor is coming inside to a well-lit auditorium than a dark tent with a, on a red carpet that's on uneven ground for people about 100 to 150 people. I just think the reasons this time around don't warrant having it outdoors.
You mentioned about, it was the other two meetings that we had, indoors, town meetings indoors. The one, last one outdoors was, what, close to 500 people? And it was amazing. I thought it was one of our best town meetings ever. Never mind the results of what happened, but the fact is, I didn't hear anything, any problem with the hearing. I think the audio, everything was perfect. So I, you know, indoors, outdoors, I think, I think that's an even thing, but if you're looking at the concern and safety of everybody, I think outdoors, in my opinion, solves that problem, and it causes, maybe that's a small percentage of people, but it's still someone that could be considering going, attending. That's my opinion.
Andrew?
Jerry, I'd say, you know, I heard from a lot of people. I would say, actually, over those two indoor town meetings, I got more people commenting to me on that than any other issue I've had, saying they felt disenfranchised from being able to come, they felt at risk. And while you're right, people are vaccinated. We do still have, you know, high rates of transmission, things are different now than they were three or four months ago when people originally got the vaccinations. And from my own personal perspective, sort of the issue of managing risk, certain things you have to do, and we have to do them because this isn't life. Other things where we have choices, you know, where we can err on the side of being cautious, give people the opportunity to participate, that's where I go to. You know, your issues about, yeah, it could be cold, it certainly will be dark. Solution to my mind for those, both of those is, just have it on a weekend day. It'll be light, it'll be warm. If that's the primary concern, I'm open to having a discussion about moving the timing of the meeting, but I do feel fairly strongly that having it outdoor will give, excuse me, more people the comfort that they want to have to go than having it indoors.
Sure. I mean, I think, I talked to Wayne about, move it to Saturday in the morning.
Fine.
Works for me. Then people can see, should be warmer than at night.
Yeah.
I would suggest later Saturday afternoon, just because people have, you know, people
have youth sports commitments, people have religious obligations on Saturday mornings. By Saturday afternoon, most people, you know, 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, people out of work, be out of there. It's not a long agenda, it's not a long warrant. Hopefully, we could do some things to speed up, you know, how the meeting flows, as we've done to date. And I think it addresses, you know, I think it's a happy middle point between your concerns and what we're trying to accomplish as a group.
David?
I agree. I think that's a good solution, to move it to the daytime on a Saturday. That'd be great. After the last town meeting, I think that folks will wear a coat, you know. It was, it was a little cool. I was underdressed myself, but, you know, nothing that I can't fix with wearing a jacket. I thought it went well. I thought we had a great turnout. I didn't notice any issues with, you know, the sound or not being able to hear anyone. I thought that worked out well. I am concerned with, you know, the variants that we're facing, you know, there's, the numbers are all over the place. I think we should monitor that and, you know, and play it by ear. I do understand it takes for logistics to be worked out, advance notice, and I would prefer to have it outdoors myself, unless the numbers suggested otherwise.
Tom?
I like the idea, but I think we may have a conflict. We have youth sports, high school sports. Parents won't be there to attend. Those are a large portion of our voters. I like the idea. I don't know how we can incorporate everybody and make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to be there. But I know we're all right. I think it's a good idea. The other, we can always add some heater units in there, additional heating units, but the conflict of parents being there with their children are in sports, yes, those are your voting, those are your voters.
And you don't think they'll be there?
No, I think they'll attend their children's sports.
Well, I think if you do it in the afternoon, most kids, I mean, it's been a while since I've had kids in youth sports. Don't laugh, yours are older than mine. But, you know, by the end of the afternoon, most of them are done. It may matter checking with the schools to see what the field obligations are.
Rodney?
That's exactly the point that I was going to make, Madam Chair. The date that we checked on was the date that it's currently scheduled for with the school. We have not checked regarding weekend or any daytime event. I'm not saying it should or shouldn't. I'm not getting into that. I'm just saying, we have not checked with the school, and we're going to have to contact the superintendent and see whether or not it conflicts with any of our home schedules, which it could. I don't know. I don't have the schedule in front of me.
If asked to be on a Sunday to avoid a Saturday conflict, that could be it. I just think you've got, I'd like to have you just take a look and see what the options are, and then, you know, we've got, what, one more meeting before we have to execute? You know, we can vary the date a little bit.
The only thing is, I know that the folks at the tent rental company, and we're going to have to go back out and go through the process again, and we're running out of time. What I do know is that, and I'm not getting into the temperature, I can't control that, but in terms of the lighting, we did have a contingency plan to address that this morning with the DPW Director. Do you want to elaborate, or is that all right, Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
We talked to Catherine this morning. We do have a contingency on lighting, so that concern shouldn't be a concern going forward. I have dates that are prior to the 17th of October, that one of the tent companies, the one that actually just did it, will not be able to do it. They could do it the 18th, but they couldn't do it the 17th. I don't know, and I'm pretty sure they could probably do it further out, they just couldn't do it prior to the 18th. And the other question I have is whether or not, what you're looking for in a tent size again, are we looking to do the dual tent to anticipate 400 people, or are we going to go down to one tent and a little closer, maybe proximity, that's all?
I would think we don't need the double.
No.
I don't see anything that's going to drive 400 people out.
No.
Neither do you.
You said 400 people because you had a very important decision to make with the town. Come on, 20 years. I don't think we've had more than 200 people at a town meeting, unless there's been a tremendous issue. I don't see a tremendous issue being on for October 18th. I think you guys are going to an expense that you shouldn't have to go through, but if you want to have it during the daylight hours, then I feel more comfortable doing it at that point. You picked a time, but make it daylight.
Would there be any conflict on the weekend for Mashpee TV?
Well, actually, I think Chris is here, he could probably answer that question.
Might be tough to make the call, like, decision, like, right now.
Chris Ball, Mashpee TV, we'll make it work, whatever happens. I just have a suggestion. Wayne, when we first were looking at it, we were going to do it right outside the gym door, but then it got so big that the tent wouldn't fit. If you're only talking 100, 150, 200 people, let's put the tent right in that parking lot, right outside the gym door. No issue with, you know, it being tougher to walk over uneven ground, Jerry, and there's a lot more light in that parking lot to deal with. People park a lot closer, it's easier to get into. And I think, Wayne, we speced out a tent that would fit there.
Right, we did, but the only question I have now is, Chris, is the power source. Where we had built the power for that field and brought it out there, would we be able to get enough power to run the, everything we need? I don't know. I'd have to check it out.
I think we could check that out, but I think that we could, you know, worst-case scenario, as we talked about one, at one time, Wayne, was we just get a bigger, a longer court. I mean, it would cost a couple thousand, no, seriously, it would cost a couple more thousand dollars, but if that's what you want to do. But, you know, I think at one time, we talked about running it out of the building, so.
We did, but we were running it both ways. We were running inside and outside at that point, so I'm just curious on, we'd have to go over and do the logistics, but I-
I mean, I'll check with Access AV, see what they need for power, and we'll see what we need for power, but just an alternative.
And if I could, Madam Chair, and I appreciate what Chris has said, and obviously the moderator. All we're looking for is, whatever your decision is, we're going to do it, and we're going to do it as quickly and as efficiently as we possibly can, but we're literally down at crunch time. I know it's not September yet, but it almost is, and-
You know what we can do? We can do a vote on whether or not we want to do it out or in, and then let you look at the dates of when we can do it.
And if I may, you've got the option, subject to, I guess, some technical details that need to be ironed out, you've got the option to do sort of the joint meeting of having some inside and then some outside in the tent.
Yeah, I like that the least.
I'm sorry?
I like that the least. I think it's hard to have people in more than one location.
Yeah, just separate.
And I'm not endorsing anything, I'm just giving you your options.
Right. So why don't we do this? Why don't we do this? I'll make a motion that we ask the manager's office to look at weekend options in October for an outside event, if it has to be in the field, field, if it can be in the parking lot, I don't care. And then come back to us with a recommendation, and if we need to, Carol, would you, you know, in order so they can, once they have their options, and they need to set it, because we need to get the warrant finalized on it, we need to have a special meeting next week. We have a special meeting next week.
We can do it.
Spend 15 minutes-
Yeah, that's fine.
-to set a date. And, you know, I'd like to meet the moderator in the middle with this. I think he raised some issues that I think we can address. If we can't make that work, you know, I'm still inclined to go outside, as originally planned, but I think, I'm hopeful that you guys can figure it out. So that's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Is that okay, Jeremy?
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Always nice to see you, Mr. Moderator.
Nice to be seen.
Okay. Discussion and approval of a Class II Secondhand Dealer's License application of Run Totonai Properties LLC, 446 Main Street. Robert here tonight. You want to come up? Congratulations on purchasing your property.
Thank you. I'm Robert Rotandi, Jr., 446 Main Street, now at Mashpee Automotive, used to be Mr. Tease. And basically, we're just looking to get a used car license, the same that the Tri-Tiers had for many years, similar license. We're just trying to be able to service our customers the same way that they did for many years, and give them the same services that they had before. So that's all we're really looking for.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I have none. It comes highly recommended behind the, yeah. Terry, I make a motion, we approve the Class II Auto Dealer's License for Rotandi Properties, DBA Mashpee Automotive.
And I'll second that motion.
Roll call, John?
Yes.
Yes.
David, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Congratulations and thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Discussion and approval of the following special event and temporary sign permit application. Grandparents' Day Run Walk, Sunday, September 12th, 2021, 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., Cape Cod Children's Museum. Laura, she didn't have to be here, we had already gone over. Do I have any questions on the Grandparents' Day Run?
Not a very long run.
Well, the grandparents. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the Grandparents' Day Walk/Run on Sunday, September 12th.
Second.
Roll call, Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
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 Mace Family Reunion, Sunday, September 12th, 2021, 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 at John Pons Beach, Martha Mace. We told them they didn't have to appear, but I did receive a call that someone wants to specify that there's no fireworks to be held at the reunion.
I'll make a motion, we approve with that condition.
Second.
Roll call, Tom?
Yes.
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 And Falmouth Annual Rod and Gun Club Yard Sale Temporary Sign Permit, Kenneth Bates. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Roll call, John?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Approval and discussion of the following appointments and resignation, registered appointments of Council of Aging Members at Large, term expires June 30th, 2023, Colleen Mian and Merrill Bloom.
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call, John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And a resign of Sewer Commission Member, Precedent Four, representative term expires June 30th, 2022, Thomas Fadella, with regret.
Make a motion, we accept the resignation, send a letter, more than just a usual regret letter, but, you know, thanking him for 37-odd years of dedicated service to the town, and without his efforts, that sewer treatment plant would not be under construction and design, and we're, you know, all deeply appreciative for his work and efforts. I'd also like to make note that town manager, I think in his communication with the Board, made a suggestion that it would be appropriate to acknowledge Mr. Fadella's service by recognizing him when the facility is constructed, so, I don't know if it's premature, but I'd like to put out the idea that we honor Mr. Fadella by recognizing him as the named recipient of the, or put his name on the transfer, on the wastewater treatment facility when it gets dedicated.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes, and I do agree with you, Tom Fadella's worked awful hard to move this forward, so he's done a good job for the town of Mashpee.
Yes, he has. David, yes?
David Whedon, yes, same sentiments. I think it would be great to honor all the work that he's put in to conserve conservation efforts and as well as water quality efforts throughout his career.
He's put in a lot of time, no question. He's done a great job.
Yes.
Andy, yes?
And I'm a yes, and again, I agree with the, his dedication to the town is amazing and should be commended, so, yes.
Okay. Discussion and approval of appointment of Ashley Fisher as Deputy Shellfish Constable. Ashley?
Haven't you done this already?
I think I can make this brief, Madam Chair. This is just a statutory requirement for the purposes of enforcement. Obviously, you know her as the DNR Director. Procedurally, this is Massachusetts general law that's with your authority, so we just ask for an affirmative vote.
I make a motion, we appoint Ashley Fisher Deputy Shellfish Constable.
Second that motion.
Roll call, John?
Yes.
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 Very good, Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley.
Discussion and approval and acceptance of a gift on behalf of the Mashpee Public Library. This was a very nice gift that was presented to the, to the library, to be the beneficiary of an estate. She was a devoted library supporter. Kathy?
As Carol indicated, the library has been named in the estate of Janet Gao, and this bequest is a little bit different than other bequests. It was dedicated directly to the library, instead of the Friends of the Library, and because a portion of it is going to be in the form of an IRA, there is some paperwork required that isn't normally required. After consulting Town Council Pat Costello, he advised that the Board of Selectmen, per Massachusetts general law, Chapter 44, Subsection 53a, that the Board of Selectmen has the legal authority to accept the gift on behalf of the library, and the library trustees have the legal authority to then expend the- And the library trustees have the legal authority to then expend the funds for the library's use. So I'm here tonight asking you to, if you would vote to accept the gift on behalf of the library.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Very nice.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Discussion with regard to Santuit Pond Report, help agent Glenn Harrington. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. How are you doing?
Excellent.
Good evening. The town manager asked me to provide an update regarding Santuit Pond. There was a request for information from the Selectmen to the Board of Health regarding the number of properties that have been pumped in the last five and 10 years and that are either 100 or 300 feet from the pond. That information was provided. And just a summary of that is that there were 121 septic systems within 300 feet of Santuit Pond, nine of which were cesspools. And there were 56 septic systems within 100 feet of Santuit Pond, seven of which were cesspools. Out of the 121 total properties, 60 properties had their system pumped in the last 10 years. And of those 60 properties, 43 systems were pumped in the last five years. Were there any questions on that? Because.
Just to clarify, there was 50%, about 50% within 10 years?
Yeah.
And that was within 300 feet?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there, is there a standard procedure for, out of your office, for how many years you can let your septic go without pumping?
Well, it should be done every two to three years.
Two to three years.
So this shows that systems are not being maintained the way they should. At 50% and 30% only done in the last five years and they really shouldn't. If they're year-round residences, they really shouldn't go more than three.
Now, can you explain the procedure of how it's recorded? When you have someone come and pump your septic?
Yes.
And when it goes to be emptied at our landfill? Do they get a receipt? Is it checked in there what house it comes from and then goes to your office?
Well, the, we license the Mashpee Septic Haulers. And the haulers are supposed to report the pumpings at each of the properties. And.
Do they do it to you?
They send it to us. They either send it to us monthly or quarterly. And we also get an update monthly from the Barnstable wastewater treatment plant where most of them will dump their sewage trucks.
Okay.
So we're getting it and cross-checking it as, as best we can, but it's really up to the, the haulers to do the reporting. So when we, the, the next part that I talk, on August 12th, I took a proposal which we had discussed previously about regarding inspection and pumping of all the septic systems around Santuit Pond. And that proposal included a requirement to inspect all the septic systems within 300 feet and to have each system pumped for maintenance. And I took this to the board on the 12th and the board said that that's something we should do. It was first recommended in the ECOM report, which was a diagnostic report for Santuit Pond. So we're following their recommendations also to make sure that the systems are maintained. And so the first letter in that packet that you received is the order letter that will go out to the homeowners with the two requirements, one for inspection, one for pumping, and a 30-day timeframe to respond to that.
Can I ask you, when was that AECOM report done?
I'm sorry?
When was the AECOM report done?
2010.
Okay, it's 2021. It wasn't until John brought up this question. Why is it that the AECOM report recommended doing inspections and pumpouts? Is it 11 years later when we've had, I don't know, five consecutive years of Blooms closing that pond that we're just getting around to implementing that simple requirement now?
Because I didn't know anything about that report until two years ago.
Well, that speaks to a larger issue about, I think, you know, we have to do a better job collectively as an environmental team, health, conservation, DNR, now sewer, taking this seriously and having some proactive engagement about what are we doing? Because, you know, quite frankly, it shouldn't have had to come from us.
Yeah.
You know, if you want stuff like this to come from us, it can. It's not that pleasant, I understand, for most people for that to happen. But, you know, I think this is a good opportunity collectively for everybody to sort of step back and think about. Got your regulatory authorities, you're all busy with what you're doing, but how does it all sum up into the bigger picture? Are we putting our efforts in the right places at the right times? Because, you know, so we've got this for Santuit. Do we know what these conditions are for, you know, around the bays? Do we know what these conditions are around the other major waterways in town? Or was this just a one-off for Santuit?
That's, I guess, I'm going to answer, I'm going to assume that that's to be the next step. Because my opinion was, let's start here, but I would love, but I would also want to get resolution on this. Like traction, if you don't mind, I just, my biggest thing is, the past is the past. I'm just looking at going forward now. I want to know how we're going to enforce. And I'm assuming, I kind of would prefer to kind of have you continue to talk about how this is going to be addressed. And then I'm assuming you're going to have an answer about the cesspools?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you don't mind, I just.
There's, there's full enforcement through Title V for both of these requirements. So, and as far as the, the upgrading, if it's a standard Title V, it would be a two-year requirement, but the Board of Health has the right to shorten that timeframe, which I think we will try to do. But in this, when the systems fail, we'll evaluate them to see if they are, should have denitrification and also phosphorus removal. And I'm going to have Brian talk about the phosphorus removal technologies in just a minute. But that's, that's really, and we'll also have to talk about the funding as far as the, the burden will fall on the homeowners, but I think there is also other funding sources available to help them. And so.
So like you talk about the, the standard one is through the county, which I actually participated in. It's, it's 5%, whatever it is.
Yes.
They throw it in the gobs.
And the town has that same program as well.
So, I, I don't even want to get ahead of myself. So if you have, do you have a lot more stuff to talk about? Because inside, I'm like, I'm like, I have a lot of stuff in my head.
Well, I, I kind of, we did just kind of talk about my next part. But the failed systems will be evaluated for the technol, for funding to see how we can help with the funding and also what technology should be applied. And Brian is the Board of Health Chair and also the Director of the Mass Title V Test Center. So I'm going to let him talk about the phosphorus removal technologies that are either, have been approved or are seeking approval. And those things are, that we can look at to apply to these failed systems.
So is there a requirement within, and this is more of an education for me and probably the public, but within a certain footage from a water, you know, lake pond, whatever, it's required to do a, a denite system or not? Not, not necessarily?
We, we have a requirement if the leaching is within 75 feet of a border vegetated wetland, they would have to do denitrification and ultraviolet disinfection.
Okay.
But now where we're talking about phosphorus and phosphorus is the element of concern here, we can, it can require the inclusion of a phosphorus treatment because that's the impact to the environment and the board has the right to include that in the system.
So, and I'm assuming the cesspool thing is an automatic fail?
Yeah, we, we did that in 2004, yeah.
That's just an immediate.
Cesspools are automatic.
How many do we have in town?
Well, nine is what, is what's on record. We may find more when we get in the field, but nine is what we had on record.
Nine is within 300 feet of Santuit Pond?
Yes.
But they're asking us, how many cesspools do we have in town?
In town, whole town.
In town?
Yeah.
I don't know that off the top of my head.
But if they're automatic failures, why are they still out there?
Well, they're automatic at time of transfer. So that, that's where we're picking them up at, at time of transfer.
You can declare them failed outside of time of transfer, right?
I believe we can.
Yeah. So I guess if you're willing to do it now, why do we have any cesspools in town?
Okay.
Why do we have any cesspools in Massachusetts? It's a larger question, but.
I, I agree. It's been a long time since cesspools have been not used. And they should have been removed a long time ago.
Yeah, well, based upon this percentage, I think we're about 95 or 96% Title V already. I was actually surprised to see so few cesspools out of these, this many properties. So I think that's good, but I understand your comment that we have a board member sitting here, so we, we hear you.
And how do you remove the phosphorus? Is it done?
How do you remove the phosphorus?
Yeah. You said there's a new treatment out to remove the phosphorus.
I'm going to let Brian handle that one.
Okay. Brian?
So I will just, if I may for a moment, just comment on the existing, existence of cesspools. You know, this is, we all know this has been a long-running problem. I don't think anybody's in denial of that fact. And it's taken a long time for us to even get where we are with the plan that we have that was developed a number of years ago. The nitrogen plan isn't a new plan that we've just received. And it's taken us this long to get Phase One funding. So, you know, we as a Board of Health, you know, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to place a burden on a homeowner to replace a system when sewer's coming along. But without some, you know, more definitive guidance on what's happening with the sewer-ing, we have a plan, we have the phases. We don't know exactly what the timing is. Then it's, it's, it's not, it's a bit unconscionable to me to require people to do something when we're going to be sewer-ing them in a period of time. You know, the ones we're talking about, there's some Phase Threes, which, I don't know what the timeline is on that. 10 years, 15, 20? I don't know. What do you think it is?
Well, the plan, I mean, the plan is pretty explicit. Now that we've started, each of the phases is on a five-year rolling basis.
Right.
So, you know, Phase Three is 10 years out to get authorized and then constructed. So it's probably, you know, 12 to 15 years out. Now, you know, if we're having a conversation, which I think we should be having.
I agree.
Where you guys are saying, yeah, look, you know, you got a bunch of these things here, phosphorus particularly is, and I sat in on your session this afternoon. You know, phosphorus is even more challenging from an alternative basis than the nitrogen system. So you're further behind, it's more speculative, you offer less certainty to people. You know, maybe we should be having a conversation with Board of Health saying, hey, look at, you know, this is, we now know what's going on at Santuit. Take a look at what's going on at Mashpee Wakeby, take a look at what's going on at Shuman Johns. Say, you know, we have a large number of systems that are contributing to the problem. There isn't a particularly good turnkey answer that's cost-effective, that gives people some certainty. Town Board Selectmen, Sewer Commissioner, which you've got a couple behind you. Maybe it makes sense to rethink the timing around this. And then we can collectively come up with a conversation to say, you know, from an overall perspective, these are the areas you ought to be doing IAs in because they're not proximate to the pond.
Right.
These are the areas we need to sewer. And at the end of the day, it'd end up maybe more financially advantageous, I didn't say cheaper. More financially advantageous and fairer to the people that find themselves in different situations here to accelerate the program. So you're doing the sewer sooner than later. So you're not asking them to do what you say you don't want to do, which I agree with 100%, just pay twice.
Exactly.
Because they're both expensive. So that, when I, you know, when I talk about us sort of collectively sitting down, looking at our various authorities, plan was designed for nitrogen remediation of the S2 areas. It didn't explicitly consider the ponds. Its timing isn't associated with the urgency associated with the ponds.
Right.
You're now giving us really good information on the source side that says, from my read, you want to do something sooner than later. You're also giving us really good information in here about the solution side, and they're iffy. They're speculative on the phosphorus side for sure.
Absolutely. Wouldn't disagree.
Those lead me to the conclusion to say we ought to take the known technology and apply it sooner rather than later, rather than go through a lot of fits and starts, scare the crap out of people, literally, to have to, you know, get their system inspected, replace it, and then turn around three or five years later and say, we're going to run a sewer by your street. Because those people are no votes at town meeting.
Right.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think the other important piece of this in conversation, we need to have more conversation. I'm totally on board with you. And as Chair of the Board of Health, certainly some of that falls on me. And please remember that I'm an appointed Board of Health member by you folks. So if you want me to come do a meeting, please just ask me, okay? I'm not, you know, I don't live that far away. I'm happy to come down and talk about this stuff. This is what I do for a living. Literally, this is what I do. I don't do anything else other than this, unfortunately.
And we're lucky to have you with your expertise.
Yes, we have.
Living in town and doing what you do.
But I just.
You should take advantage of it.
I also want to qualify the discussion of septic systems a, a little bit in that it's only one piece of the puzzle for a solution for a pond. We can't, even if we shut off all the septic systems right now, today, we'd still have a problem because we have a latent load of phosphorus in the ponds. And we also have poor land use practices around the ponds, which includes phosphorus and fertilizers that people use. They make their lawns nice and green. And we also have a habit of cutting our trees all the way down to the waterline to get a beautiful view of that pond that we care so much about. And that's one of the worst things that we could do. So maybe requiring vegetative buffers around ponds would be a beneficial activity as well. And then there's treatment of the latent phosphorus load, which can involve things like the solar bees, which we've had, which can help to a certain extent, clearly not working anymore for us. There's things like a technology that Glenn is going to talk a little bit about, that's some sort of closed cell foam material. There, there are some, some other options. Alum is another option. Dredging is apparently an option that some people will, you know, mention, being that this is a, it's not a natural pond anyway. Perhaps dredging isn't off the table for instance, to it, to pull the phosphorus load out. So, you know, I'll go through a list of technologies, and I think there are some promising technologies. But as you say, they haven't, they haven't borne the test of time yet because phosphorus has been a backburner issue for such a long time that there's no reason for these companies to come up with phosphorus removal technologies and move them along because these are all private sector companies that are only going to invest where it makes sense for them to invest. So there is some need for requirement, government requirements to start to push the industry forward toward making those investments to come up with the, with the, the technology. It's almost like if you build it, they will come. Now, if, if there's no market for them, they're not going to invest in it. So there are a handful of technologies and you do have the list of them, I believe you gave them the full list.
Yep, in your jacket.
That are out there. So presently in the state, the biggest problem we have is there are only two approved, pilot-approved technologies. And that gives us a really small toolbox to deal with. It's almost no toolbox at all. It's kind of like a hammer with a broken handle. So what we've done through Mass TC and Barnstable County is we've put together a grant which will seek to bring phosphorus technologies into the area so that we can vet them to see how effective they might be or not. We have secured donations from almost all the companies that you see on this list. Some of them are donating up to two or three systems. We're also providing subsidies for some folks. We don't have a whole lot of subsidy money, but we're going to provide up to $5,000 for the first six people who take the program. So basically, what we get is an installation of a phosphorus removal system. We monitor it for two years, see which systems work the best, and then we're able to develop almost a matrix of what systems make the most sense to apply where. But this research is going to take a little time for us to work out. I'm not advocating to take these and just start putting them in willy-nilly because you could end up with something that doesn't work and we're all standing there holding the bag. So the point of this is to try to get these companies to come into Massachusetts, increase the size of the toolbox that we have at our disposal so that we can begin to address the issue of phosphorus in ponds. of phosphorus in ponds using IA systems. And I think, and I've always said, IA systems are not the entire solution, they never will be. Sewers and IA systems together, along with some of the other alternatives that are out there, PRBs are another, are what's gonna get us there. And one other thing that we need to do is stop using our ponds for nitrogen buffers. We gotta stop, because you can get a 50 percent credit for a pond for nitrogen removal in a watershed. We're not addressing the phosphorus by doing that. So, we've gotta stop doing that. That's one of the things, we've gotta go back and look at our nitrogen plans and say, wherever we're taking a 50 percent reduction from a pond, we shouldn't be doing that, because now we've got a phosphorus issue that we're not addressing. So, the technologies are here, I can go through them if you'd like. I mean, there's tremendous variation in what's available. But, you know, I'd be, maybe it would be better if you just kinda take your time with them, and then I could answer questions offline if you'd like, or.
I like that idea, because I'd like to soak into it a little bit and maybe have you, maybe have you back, and we can kinda talk about it at another meeting.
I'd be happy to, always happy to come.
Yeah, because I think that, you know, just by your timetable, Brian, you know, sort of get these out there, get a couple of years, install a couple of years of data, evaluate it. You know, you're already past when we could be doing Phase Two. For stuff that, for areas that, for the very reason you cite, you probably don't wanna get down to as low a discharge as you possibly can. And that's collection, proximate to the ponds, and try and get that. So, I think, you know, I think there's a lot of good stuff here, we oughta chew on it a little bit. But I also think we oughta have, you know, a multi-departmental conversation about what are the tools? Where are the opportunities to move things, you know, in a way that, you know, builds upon people's authorities? And if it means, you know, collectively, as a group of water quality specialists, come back and say, we need to buy a lot up to set better buffers on shorefront. You know, we need to, you know, do better, you know, fertilize regulations, position the legislature. What's the whole suite of things?
Yep.
Because, you know, we can pound away at these septic systems, and you can give everybody a brand spanking new Title V system, you still have terrible water quality.
Right.
Exactly.
So, what's the point?
Yeah.
You know, it's like, we can, we can address these failures and solve them as failures, but they don't fix the problem. And people can spend a lot of money. So, I'd rather see you, this is helpful, I'd like to see you figure it, do what you did here for all the other water bodies.
Right.
Fresh and salt. I don't know, you know, I assume all these records are computerized, you know, who's got, who's got what system in their, in their yard? Give us an idea of where we have these targets, and then sit down with sewer, sit down with conservation, sit down with DNR. You know, frankly, and Board of Appeals, too. Maybe, maybe we don't give, maybe we don't give variances to setbacks on the ponds, because it's creating this problem. So, I think, you know, there's five or six departments in this town that they're working together with the goal being, not compliance with your own rules, but getting water quality benefits as quickly and as inexpensively as possible. I think you guys have enormous tools available to you that you could use to, you know, make the investment you already made in sewers realize better returns for people than they otherwise would.
I 100% agree. And we had the discussions, I think, early last year, you had set up the series where the, you know, the different boards came in. I think that was tremendously beneficial, it gets us on the same page, and, you know, I think I'd like to see that.
Do it again?
We need to do it again, I think.
Yep.
So that we're all on the same page, because as a Board of Health, I would love to do more. But at the same time, we need to kind of work in lockstep with everybody else before we can just say, okay, do this, because.
Yep.
Very good.
So, what does that mean as far as, you know, suggestion that we just put off, put off addressing this, these concerns in Santuitt Pond, though, correct?
No, I guess what I am raising, let's say this letter goes out, I mean, we just saw this letter 20 minutes ago.
Right.
So, we sent out a letter to 100 and, what, 97 people?
121.
121, and say, get an inspection and you're facing a failure. And a bunch of them are gonna fail.
Right.
Yep.
Right? And then they come into you, and you say, well, you gotta replace them. And then you've got, I don't know, 50, 60 homeowners who all of a sudden are saying, why are you making me spend
Right.
15, 20, $25,000? Why don't you just bring sewer to me? And I just think, we need to, we need to have figured out the answers to those questions before we, before we throw some, a match on that can of gasoline, and.
I hear you, but, I mean, if you're talking about a potential Phase Three, you know what?
Two.
Huh?
Two, do it faster.
So, you're talking about changing the.
Yeah, yeah.
So, again, now that's another whole conversation, but, but you also, what freaks me out is, I mean, seven cesspools within 100 feet. They could be just, I mean, flush, and it's just, you might as well put a pipe out of your house.
Pretty much.
That is, pretty much, right?
There's no capacity left, and that's where the whole phosphorus.
That, that right there, seven within 100 feet, and knowing.
So, so here's the thing, let's say we do what Falmouth did, right? Falmouth told people they had to put it in IA systems. And if they put it in a, they put in some type of revised system, then they don't have to hook up to the sewer.
Well, the Chatham did that, too.
I know.
And what they did is they gave us 10 years.
But we just need to think through that answer, because, you know, if you sewer the watershed, and you sewer around the ponds, you know, those houses that have cesspools 100 feet from the water are gonna have septic systems 100 feet from the water. Because if you think about the properties and the size of the properties, and the way people are shoe-worn in there, they're in anyplace else to go. So, do you wanna drive an outcome that has people put a lot of money in a new system in their backyard when we're pulling systems out through sewer-ing? And I guess, I mean, this is one place, this is one time you might hear me arguing that we take a little bit of a pause and maybe leave something because we're solving the problem. But unless we agree we're gonna solve the problem, then yes, they oughta, they oughta get out of there.
But see, I, I, I understand what you're saying, I just, I, I can see putting this off for something that maybe, when we get around, we're still, we're still gonna be talking 10 years.
No, I think we can, we have to do better. Would you consider tight tanking those systems? If we said we were gonna have.
Especially the nine that are 100 and.
If you told the cesspools, cesspools are outta here, the town's gonna sewer in a reasonable period of time. Could you live with a tight tank? I mean, tight tanks are a hell of a lot cheaper than a new septic system, and it's designed to go away.
It's cheaper, cheaper short-term, more expensive long-term, because you're pumping that thing pretty frequently.
I know, but what's long-term?
Yeah, but how big are, how big are these cottages that have the cesspools?
Some of them can be pretty big.
If they're pretty close, really?
They're not necessarily cottages, Carol. I mean, these could be like.
You go down Shields Road, there's some pretty big houses.
Yeah.
That's a pretty old septic system.
And how big, how big are the tight tanks?
1,500 gallons, 2,000 gallons, depending on the size of the house, but it's still.
Minimum 2,000, yeah.
You're still pumping it multiple times.
And all I'm saying is, I just like us to talk through this stuff.
For how many people?
Before we send people a $20,000 bill, because that's what this letter is. It comes, for the nine people, it's a 15 to $20,000 bill. And they can't meet your setbacks, and they're gonna come in asking you for variance, because they can't meet their setbacks, given the slot sizes that they have. We're gonna go through all the, they're gonna engineer, they're gonna do all this rigmarole, and we're gonna go turn right around back to them and tell them, yank them out. I just wanna think.
Think that's what we do it. What about this, then? What, I mean, is it wrong for us to have them move forward with, they're gonna, they're gonna inspect the systems, they're gonna pump the systems, they have to pump them? Because, first of all, as far as I'm concerned, they're wrong, they haven't pumped them. So, first inspect them, then pump them, and then exactly what's gonna happen with the failed systems to be determined. But right now, now we know, around Santuitt Pond, we know how many failed, they were all pumped. Sep, the cesspools, I, I don't know, I'm, that, that.
Can you di-test those cesspools? And see if you could break out?
We have before.
Yeah.
Been a while since we've done it, but we have before.
We could talk to Bill Kerfoot. He has a technology that looks at optical brighteners there in like a lot of the laundry wash products. He has a device that's able to detect those, so you can find plumes coming out of houses pretty easily with that. You could do dye tests, I mean, there's a number of ways that we could do it.
All I'm after is what you're after, John, which is, you got a cesspool, it's going right into the pond, it's flushing right into the pond, those soils are shot. You're not gonna get any decent absorbent capacity in a revised system in those situations, anyway. Those might be exactly the things to kinda say, you gotta tight tank them, because you can't get anything decent in there.
And the other thing, too, is, I mean, even this letter going out, we don't have to require them to do it immediately. I mean, we could find that they have cesspools, we could get the system inspections done, and, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily have to enforce immediately. At least this way, we get a sense of what's out there.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying, just go out there, but again, pumping, if it's just gonna be pumped, inspected, and then let's assess, like, what are your findings? And then by that time, maybe we've moved our communication forward and.
And where it says you are hereby ordered to comply within 30 days, it means having it inspected.
Inspected or pumped, yes.
Or pumped, and pumped.
I think that's fair.
I think that's fair.
So, for me, I, I'd like to, you know, see, see the same sort of assessment done around all the water bodies.
Oh, yes.
You know, not just the ponds, even the rivers and streams as well, as well as the bays. Couple of concerns I have are, you know, getting that, compiling that information, and then having it for a joint meeting that we have with, you know, so there's improved coordination and communication between departments and things. I know, just for kicks, I was looking at Google Earth, and you can actually see the ponds that are impacted with the sign, with bacteria and such. And, and what, from when I was looking at it, what I noticed was, it's all associated with concentrated developments. You know, areas where there's conservation land and there's large green scapes around there, then it's not an issue. The water on, even Google Earth, the water is black, it's healthy water.
It's true.
And when you look at the green areas, right, just abutting, there's concentrated developments. So, I mean, if it's that simple to look at it and see where these areas are, how do we address and target those specific areas? And if they need to be heightened as far as the priority levels, then, you know, what can we do? You know, are there any subdivisions going in that area? Would it be beneficial for us to, you know, cooperate and maybe supplement subdivision build-outs to where you could have a system that targets that specific area? One place that comes to mind is the low-income housing they're gonna be doing over on Howland Mill Road. You know, if that, if that was something that is gonna have a system designed over there, can we design that to have sufficient capacity to maybe target some of Saconset Island and some of that area? You know, and kinda target specific areas where we know loads are coming from. You know, I don't think, I don't, I don't have a degree in this to kinda see where the problem areas are. You know, so, but I, I'd just like to see more coordination and communication on, inter devon mentally to address the problem so that we can expedite the restoring our waterways. Another, another question is, on short-term rentals inspections, I know we said, you know, alternate so that over three years, everybody's tested. My concern is with short-term rentals that, you know, that they've been doing it, and when's the last time they were tested? And, because, you know, with the whole Airbnb thing, there's probably a lot of houses out there where they converted rooms in the basement over to, just to pack people in. And how do, how do, one, I'd like to know that those places, the places, what's, what is the success stat for its capacity meets the daily load that the septic tanks or whatever system is designed for? And, you know, if it's economic, if they're doing it to make revenue with short-term rentals and Airbnb's, then, you know, they should be able to pay for the system to be designed to accommodate the necessary capacities. So, you know, I, I'm not gonna sympathize if they complain about costs. You know, especially in areas in and around waterways and things. So, I didn't know if, you know, there's a plan to do that in the very near future, to do those types of assessments on those short-term rentals. I think that's a priority area we should kinda get to.
We are, we are checking the bedrooms, because Joe Callahan is the code compliance officer, and he checks the bedrooms and checks the Title V plans as part of the, before he issues the rental certificate. Because we have that, that is specifically on the rental certificate, the number of bedrooms and the number of occupied people who can be in the, in the rental. So, we are checking that, and we have enforced it as well.
All right.
We have our problem properties, as always, but, but we do check that as part of the inspection process.
Thank you for that.
Brian, if I could ask you a couple of simple questions. The, the IA systems that you have designed, that we had a chance to look at, the installation cost of a plant such as the one you have at the base, is that somewhere, I think, at that number of 15,000? Come up, does that sound about right?
Are you talking about the layer cake system?
Yes, yes.
I mean, it's, it's so hard to pin down an exact site-to-site cost. So, an average install of a, of a standard septic system right now is probably running 12 to $13,000 per system. That's based on information we have from the septic loan program that we run. I would add on probably, you know, another 10 to 12,000 on top of that for the additional installation costs associated with putting in the advanced components. Now, that depends a lot on which type of system you're, you're talking about. There are some systems that have the ability to be retrofit onto an existing system. We have a project in Barnstable associated with a shoeable pond, where we're gonna be putting on nitrogen-reducing systems. And nitrogen, I know, is not the reducing or the limiting nutrient in ponds, but we're trying to look at a neighborhood-scale deployment. But regardless, the technology that's been selected for that particular project can be retrofit. So, if you have an existing compliant Title V septic tank, and you have a leach field that's functional, you can put this unit in between and get the new, you know, get the nitrogen removal. One of the technologies you'll see on this list that we have a lot of interest in is the Fuji Clean technology. That's a company from Japan. The nice thing about that particular unit is it's a twofer, it does nitrogen and phosphorus removal. The, it's kind of, it's, it's another retrofit situation, it would replace a septic tank. So, one of the units that we're gonna be installing here is a house that has a totally compliant system. Basically, we're gonna park the Fuji Clean next to the existing septic tank, pipe it in, pipe it into the existing leach field. So, you know, the cost issue with these is not, it's not just a nice cut and dried, like, take the cost and add this and add that. I mean, it's really, it's highly site, site-dependent on what the ultimate cost is.
Right, so it can be a variable. And then, and then there's always the additional, which it throws me, is the bak mulch there, that comes up, and it, how effective it actually is, it actually throws me that, it is as effective as.
You have to do the Fuji Clean system. You have your Title V, and then you have your leaching field, and you put this in between to catch what's going to your leaching. That's what it does? And what's the cost of something like that to install?
So, this, so, that's, that's part of why we're doing this grant, is because this technology in the United States is so new that they haven't put a price on it yet.
Okay.
There's one in existence in the entire United States that sits at the test center right now. Well, actually, I should say there are three, they have two of them at their facility in Maine, but we have one of them. And when I asked him, what's, what's the cost gonna be on this? He said, well, I couldn't tell you yet, because we haven't set the cost on it. So, that's one of the things we need to tease out with this grant, is to figure out what the cost is for these systems. What's the removal rate for these systems? What's the longevity for these?
So, they're still being tested?
They're still being tested, they're still very much, as, as, you know, Andrew pointed out, they're, they're not proven technology yet, unfortunately. And it's just, it's the situation we have right now. So, you know, my hope is that this grant is able to push that ball forward, but it's gonna take some time.
The other thing to think about is, you know, for the sewer project, we're doing this for public finance. We found a way to distribute the cost equitably across the population. Doing these septic systems, whether they're IA systems or whatever, the whole bill goes to you. And you've got some real potential disparities in equity to the individual for the cost of their portion of the solution, if it's septic system-based. And there's some things going on out there that they'll figure that out, but it's not so easy. And it's not fair, frankly, to just say, all right, you half of the town, you're on septics and you're on your own, and the other half of you, you might find this hard to believe, given how we've talked about the cost of sewer, you all benefit from being connected to the public system and having everybody pay a pro rata share over a 30-year period versus having to write a check the day the thing goes installed in your, in your yard. And so, you know, there's technology issues, and there's financing equity issues, and there's property control issues. Because all these things rely on testing to see whether they work or not. They all rely on maintenance, see where they work on. I don't know about you, but the people who haven't pumped their system in 10, 15 years have had a cesspool for 50. I don't know about you, but people who haven't pumped their system in ten, fifteen years, who have had a cesspool for fifty, don't strike me as the best candidates to do routine maintenance and monitoring of the septic system. And if our whole program is predicated on that behavioral change,
We're in trouble.
We got trouble.
We got big trouble.
We got some really, you know, now that we got the sewer treatment plant up and underway and rolling, we now have, I think, the ability to have some brain space to think about this stuff, figure out what's the best answer for the people of the town of Mashpee. I know it sent them a letter saying, "You have a problem. It's a bad answer, and we won't be able to sustain it." Because they're gonna come in and say, "My property tax bill didn't go up just because of the sewer, and you just handed me a twenty-five thousand dollar bill. What the heck?" And I don't have a good answer for that right now, neither does anyone of you.
Yep, that's a good point. And, see, now you talk about management. You talk about management of IAs, and that's like my other... The other half of what I do. I mean, you were on the call today about the responsible management entity and who's responsible for the system. And one of the first things that I always say in that RME discussion is, you have to approach onsite systems if you're using them as part of your infrastructure. You have to manage them like infrastructure, so you have to create a utility for maintaining those systems. And you also have to finance them in a way that's similar to what you're financing the rest of your infrastructure to make it more equitable for folks. Because it's unfair, as you said, to place this burden on individual homeowners when everybody is the beneficiary of that cost. So to spread the cost over, you know, the full tax base for utilizing these systems is an absolute necessity and part and parcel of the program. So, I mean, I'm happy to come and talk, I could talk about RMEs for hours, but, you know, I'm sure we probably all want to get out of here at some point. So, if you'd like to have me back to just talk about that, I'd be happy to.
Yes.
I guess my concern is overall is, if you have these homes that are right next to the ponds, the rivers, the estuaries, and they're, they're just basically flushing the toilet and they're going into the ponds, how do we protect those waters for all of the residents of Mashpee? I mean, it's only a few, if there are only a few houses with very close proximity to the waterways, we need to do something sooner rather than later, not ten years down the road. We need to get some action in there and prevent that nitrogen and phosphorus from flowing into the waterways. There's gotta be a simple solution. I know nobody wants to pay for a system that's gonna be removed and, or not used in more than ten or fifteen years, but ten or fifteen years is a long time to go with just flushing a toilet into the Santuit Pond or whatever waterway is there. But somewhere, someone's gotta come up with a solution, some money, funding that's available, when the town gets involved. We need to protect the ponds. That's what's important, I think, right now. Not let it go much longer.
Sorry, two things. Do you need any approval from us to ask for any, to apply for any grants or to anything to
To get more?
Expedite anything that you're doing?
Through Barstow County, no. I mean, just your support, generally speaking, is appreciated. And if you know anybody who might be willing participants for our grant program, that would be beneficial for us. I mean, we need to get systems in the ground to test them, and finding volunteers, guinea pigs to do it is, you know, the tricky, trickier piece of it. I mean, we offer a lot of subsidies and, you know, carrots on a stick, but it's finding, you still need willing people. So if you can help us find those, that would be very helpful.
Just one other thing. The only approval that, and one of the other funding sources, if I could just get to that, is there's mitigation funds from the Cape Cod Commission that has been paid back to the town through other development of regional impact projects. And so, as of 2019, there was two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars that was set aside for denitrification use. And then thirty-two thousand approximately for public outreach. So that money is in our coffers, and town manager has the right to dispense that. But, so I wanted to make that, that's the only approval that would be necessary at this level here to go to use, most of these phosphorus removal technologies have to have some kind of denitrification ahead of them. So I think in those situations, I think that that would be applicable.
And I would like the board's authorization for that purpose.
Some of...
Second.
I'll say, yes.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Definitely.
In addition to that, I don't know if it's necessary, but I'd like to make a recommendation to, or I'd like to make a motion for a recommendation to the Board of Health to move forward with the pumping as well as the inspection around Santuit Pond as we set forward, if the board...
Immediately.
Yes, correct. And then with no, at that point, we'll just, you have an assessment, now you know the results, and then by that time, hopefully, we'll...
Would you extend that to include doing the same assessment and then considering the same actions on the other major waterways in town?
I think so, but I, at the same time, I mean, I'm just thinking, the Board of Health and they gotta get these letters out. If you can start to do some research along the ways of other, I guess I would start with the most troubled...
I think you've got the gist of where we're going with this.
Yes.
Just, and we can just kind of repeat the action.
Yep, yep.
And then come...
Second John's motion, Carol.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 And then have you come back in and give us a report? You're sending out this letter, so you're giving them thirty days. So figure forty-five days, come back in and give us a report of findings?
Yes, that's fine. Report this to us outdoors at Jerry's meeting. And speaking with the Director of Natural Resources and some of these, we'd like to come back and talk about the larger picture too, because right now with the sewage part of, the ECOM report says five percent of the phosphorus is coming from sewage systems. So this is a small portion that's going in. Is it still contributing? Absolutely. The larger portion is the eighty-seven percent of the phosphorus that's being recycled, or the latent, as Brian put it, in the pond. And so, I think we'd like to come back and continue the discussion on how to treat that. I think we should, but also I think from the discussion we had about one of the articles in the Fall Town meeting, there's gonna be some money to go in and reevaluate that percentage distribution between latent phosphorus and sediments and what's coming in from the outer part of the watershed. So, I don't believe those numbers. I know they're in the report. I don't believe them. I think, you know, the sewage part's gotta be a more meaningful portion of it, but your point is well taken. We ought to be stepping back. Like, so much we're gonna get done tonight. But I'd like to have you have that conversation, come back and talk about it, specifically Santuit, but then also for all the other waterways.
And start, exactly.
I agree. You know, the ACOM report, I believe, was done on the back end of a drought, extended drought. So I don't feel as though the transmission of the phosphorus was, you know, under normal conditions to actually capture what was going on in the pond. So that number just sounds really awkward to me to blame, you know, seventy-five, eighty percent of the problem on natural...
Especially when the reason, I mean, I've heard Rick say it so many times, I'm tired of hearing it. The reason the solar bees failed, in his estimation, is because he had a lot of heavy rainstorms that are washing phosphorus in from the watershed. Well, you can't have it be five percent external, but have that be the reason why those solar bees failed. It's one or the other. They're mutually exclusive. So which is it? Ashley wants in, Carol. She's hiding.
Go ahead.
I just want to add that, yes, we will be looking at that with the MVP grant, but the tribe's judging feasibility study also is taking sediment core samples. So we're gonna be looking at the phosphorus content within those core samples too. And that report will be done in December or early in the new year.
Thank you.
So we'll have some more definitive data that's, you know, a lapse of two to three years, so.
Did you have more things to discuss?
Well, we did have a meeting. The Assistant Town Manager had us review another technology. This goes more towards the overall picture for the pond, and we can certainly review it at then. But I did give you my comments upon the technical review of that. Ashley was there, and Drew McManus was there, and Christine, my assistant, was there at the meeting. And Scott Smith presented this AquaFlex and BioChar technology to be used in, basically, the entire pond. And it would take up the entire pond with this technology. I didn't know if you want me to go through this, because it's not septic-related, but it does go to, it was a technology that we did look at, and we can talk about it as one of the larger solutions for the whole pond.
Have you seen it work? Have you dug into the...
No, this is the first that we had seen it. They did a small, they called it a mesocosm, which was basically three small test areas in Shubal's Pond and Marston's Mills. And Nancy Leland from UNH was involved as doing the overall research as part of that study that was done. It was a short-term study. We would recommend that that same study be done also in Santuit Pond if it were to be used. And the good thing is, is that the proprietor is looking to give the materials to the town. So it's, the cost is supposed to be one-hundred percent free as far as the materials. And we estimated it to be about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in materials based upon the acreage and the number of sets that would need to be put out to treat the pond. He, Scott Smith, said that it was used widely in Florida, but didn't have a whole lot of data to show as far as what its efficacy was. So that's why we, as department heads, said we want to do a smaller treatment area to see exactly what's gonna happen with it before we do a full application.
So you, so I'm trying to understand, so it's not gonna cost the town, right?
Right, that's...
So...
According to him, yes.
Right, so if it's not gonna cost us, can we, are you recommending that to at least go forward now with that testing or a sample?
Absolutely. If it is going to be used and approved, we would recommend that it's, a small study is done prior to a full application.
Okay.
Can I ask, do you want to speak to the issue?
So, hi, yes. I reached out to Nancy Leland at UNH, and she just feels like there should be some more data collection done. And if Scott Smith does want to come to the town of Mashpee, that we do replicate what was done on Shubal's Pond. And on that site, he did use the AquaFlex with the BioChar, which is another product that does soak up excess phosphorus. And my recommendation is to do a control and a treatment with AquaFlex, a treatment with both AquaFlex and BioChar, and then a separate treatment with just BioChar, to see what is actually going on per treatment with the control site. This would give enough data, hopefully, for the product itself, so we could see what its capabilities are. And if the town would want to move forward with it, then we can present that to the board.
So when do we want to try this?
You don't need anything from us to, you're just, you're gonna go continue on that process?
No, that request came through the TM's office, so I think however he wants us to handle that, we'll certainly, I've issued my comments and the other concerns that we had talked about at the meeting. So I think it's really in your court now.
Yeah, and we're looking at all options, and one of the things that was brought to our attention, and I can't remember whether it came from the chair or who it came from, but at any rate, we wanted to sit down with this individual, and we wanted to have the respective department heads present, which we did. And we're presenting the information, and obviously, there's a lot of useful information between the two department heads.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking at it from perspective, if it's free and it's a trial-type of process?
I don't see how you can go wrong.
So you don't need any vote from us, or it just sounds great?
Will they need a vote to proceed?
Do they? I just, you just said no.
Can I just add that the only thing is that, what I've heard is, we need to do, we need to follow the scientific method, and we do need to get the information in an accepted manner through a reputable laboratory that does do testing for total phosphorus and total nitrogen, et cetera.
Well, I feel confident if the way you want to do it, to do it that way. I think the board will, we don't know anything about it.
This is what I can tell you. If you take no action, I'm obviously gonna take the counsel and advice of the respective department heads.
Exactly.
If you say, "We do not want you pursuing this at all," then I am not going to pursue it.
Right.
Do I have a motion?
We don't need an act, so we don't need an action with that? Unless we're against it.
Is anyone against it?
So, the, that AquaFlex process in the BioChar, it doesn't say exactly how long it has to stay in the water before you see results. That's undetermined at this time? And that's all based on how much?
Yes, the theory is this BioChar is gonna soak up so much phosphorus, it's gonna sink to the bottom, and he's gonna need to change it out. He's gonna, it's, he's gonna test different time periods. It's just a lack thereof of data, and he's gonna work with Nancy Leland from UNH, and that's something that we would require, that somebody be involved with his testing.
And does he have any idea when, is there a specific time of year? Does he have the information as far as a time of year when it seems to be more effective?
Yeah, we had chosen two test periods, one being in the fall and one being in the early spring, so we can get both ends of the spectrum. So when we're coming up on our blooms, and when we're dying off or during our blooms.
Yeah, I was thinking, the summertime when the water temperatures spike and the cyanobacteria actually spikes, and there's more year-round, more residency, I didn't know if the summer month was being considered when the loads are higher.
Exactly. I think we just have to do multiple time periods to collect the data, because there just isn't enough available. So we will be doing multiple tests, and it's...
Ashley, is your point that there's not any independent verified scientific data upon which you can adjudicate the claims?
Yes.
And you're looking to address that lack of independent data?
Yes.
Right.
That's fine.
So it's in your hands? Yeah, I think the mesocosm study is a better way. I mean, if you went for a full deployment, if you look at the numbers, there would be sixteen hundred sets of these things, which, by my estimation, are about this large. I mean, you're gonna restrict access, use of the pond during the period that you have these deployed. So, I mean, that's something to consider as well with the full scale.
Yeah, if it's done during the summertime, the pond wouldn't have to be closed to recreation, because there's gonna be that many of these sets that need to be put out for a full application.
Yeah, it's pretty much closed. Just FYI, the pond is pretty much closed for recreation at this point, because it's so...
Right.
Nasty.
You still see a lot of bass pressure out there, so if a full deployment, for what he's saying, is a full treatment, it would be almost inaccessible to any voting.
Okay. Well, like you said, but you're addressing that, that's why you said the fall, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I have nothing else.
Okay. Any other questions for Glenn? Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian and Glenn?
Thank you.
Thanks. Please do invite us back.
Oh, you will. Discussion and approval of transfer of Robert Cantina's interest in CCECAT LLC to Telus Mass Manufacturing LLC with regards to CCECAT LLC host-community agreement, Ricardo Fonte to Telus.
Yes, Fonte. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. I have to admit, this conversation reminded me...
Excuse me in the back, please. Take your conversations out in the hall, please. Thank you.
Thanks for having us. We are here from Kansas City, although my colleague is an ex-Boston resident for about thirty-plus years, so that's why we're here. Last year, we made acquaintance of Rob Catania, and we have a group that has medical and recreational marijuana projects in the states of Oregon, Missouri, and Oklahoma. And we're wanting to develop this manufacturing license here in Mashpee as the expansion of our organization. So I am the CEO of Telus. I will be the sole manager here for Telus Mass. And we have reached an agreement with Mr. Catania to purchase the equity. And this is one of the steps that we're following with the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission as part of the process to transfer the license. As everyone knows, this is a highly regulated industry. And so we're stepping into this license with full intent to follow all the regulations of MCCC. license with full intent to follow all the regulations of MCCC, also follow the Host Community Agreement, and abide by the Host Community Agreement that was signed by CCE. So we're just stepping into the shoes of this entity to continue the development of the project in the current site. And I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have for us.
Okay, we'll start with John. Do you have any questions?
Continued, no, I don't, not at this time.
Okay. Andrew?
I don't have any questions. I just think that, to my mind, you know, we go through this process, we gave weight and favor to local applicants, we have an agreement that allows the applicants to sell to whoever, your whoever. And I just think the whole local participation thing is a sham. I think the law stinks. I don't want to be, I hate being in a position to sign off on these things. I mean, I got your packet, I don't, you know, I don't know you, I don't know what you guys do, we don't have, we have the same lack of information on you as we do anybody else who comes in. And, you know, hopefully, the Cannabis Control Commission will vet you appropriately, and if you warrant getting a license, you get it. But I don't even like being in this position, because I have nothing to base my judgment on you or anything about your company. Hate this law, have always hated it, don't want to do this. Has nothing to do with you.
No, I appreciate that. But if I may, we are happy to provide, certainly, I provided information myself, happy to provide information about.
I'm not in a position to vet you, right? I don't know how to do that. It's not my expertise. I don't want to pretend like I'm doing something I don't know how to do. So I'm not, anyway.
Understand, understand. And MCCC is definitely vetting all the principles of our organization, as every other state does. Because this is one of the most highly regulated industries currently in the country, if not across the world, so it has a lot of obstacles and hurdles that you have to pass through. So, but I understand where you're coming from, so.
David?
Not at this time.
Tom?
Yeah, I feel pretty much the same as Andrew does, but no need to go into that. I mean, we were happy at the time to have someone local to anticipate in the business. But again, like as Andrew said, I'll let the state regulators take care of the rest.
Okay. And I would say that we intend to have local participation and local management here. Obviously, I am in Kansas City, but we build our teams locally to work with the local markets, not only here in Mashpee, but throughout the states as we develop this project.
I do have to say that your resume was very impressive of what you've done over the years. And when I say that, Rodney?
Yes, sir. I think you mentioned that you're currently in Missouri, Oklahoma, and Oregon.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Have you had any violations in operations in any of those states?
We have not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
I got one other question. What do you actually have? Are you going to be seeking any change in your status, or are you just going to be, you're vertically integrated according to your resume here, so you're buying a manufacturing facility, you're going to turn around, try and change it to become any type of retail or expand your basis?
Not, not in Mashpee. We only want to operate a manufacturing license in Mashpee. We are having conversations with retailers and cultivators, but mostly to build our relationships to essentially wholesale product to the retailers and to buy clean biomass from cultivators.
Okay. Make a motion, we transfer the license agreement as requested.
Second.
Second motion.
Roll call, Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Really appreciate it.
Communications and correspondence? No?
I have a question about it. So, last meeting, you know, I gave 39 questions to the National Guard rep. I was told, we were told the meeting was going to be addressed at the MC3 meeting, which was held last Thursday.
Last Thursday.
I was told, a private email, that in fact, that was not going to be the case. So I'm wondering, have we had any communication back answering those questions? You gotten anything?
I do not have answers to your questions. I was invited out on Thursday, August 26th, this Thursday, from 09:00 until whenever, for the purposes of meeting with Colonel Riley and some others. And I am authorized to invite the selectmen. I was going to bring this up. Obviously, I could only bring two with me, because otherwise, we'd be violating the open meeting law. But if there were two selectmen that were interested in going, then I would communicate that. And he is aware, the Colonel's aware, that I was going to bring this up tonight.
Well, I repeat the answer I gave you, Carol, when she brought that up to me. Ask the questions in public setting, because I want the answers on the record. I have zero interest in going to a private discussion and having those questions answered in private. That is not open to the public record. So I want my questions answered, either in person or in writing.
Which I think is fair.
Yeah. And just to give a little wrap-up too, as far as the military meeting, Joint Base Cape Cod, we also had, which Andy's referring to, Andy was also on the call. They did bring up the, you know, they were all here, and it was very clear, we were not talking about the machine gun range, and that was made absolutely clear. I was a little frustrated to find out that towards the end of the meeting, they, within five days of, you know, last week, they had a meeting with the Board of Selectmen in Sandwich to discuss not only, but only, the machine gun range.
Machine gun range.
So the week prior, they could not discuss anything, but they already had a scheduled meeting at the Board of Selectmen in Sandwich. And now, not only that, they have a public meeting.
In Falmouth.
Which was already scheduled in Falmouth, which is on Thursday, to talk about the machine gun range, that we were not able to talk about here.
Right.
Being a veteran, I find, I thought they misspoke, so I said, "You must have misspoke." And, you know, Andy was there, I was, I was caught speechless, and that is hard to do.
And that's a shame that they're not being forthright with us.
So, I understand, you know, again, I'm all about the, you know, you know, military being trained and the whole thing. I, you know, I know we're, it looks like we're the furthest town from.
Well, since they've, since.
Proximity of the range.
Since they have set up one with Sowerd and one with Falmouth, can the office set up, set up another meeting for them to come in to just talk about the gun range here?
We can do whatever the board wants.
I mean, if they're doing it in other towns, why not let them come back and talk just about the gun range here?
And I don't know if they're doing, they're, they're looking at this private tour to, you know, alleviate those questions. But again, I, to Andy's point, I don't know why they, can they not answer any of the questions? I mean, maybe a few of them are tough, but I don't think 35 are, like, you can't answer any of them? But I, you know, I just, I don't know.
I did have communication with the chair, and I did email the Colonel August 18th at 4:07 PM, and I specifically said, and I quote, "I was also requested to ask you if the 39 questions submitted by Selectman Godley would be answered in any type of written form." Close quote. I did receive a response on August 20th at 10:48 AM, and he stated, and I quote, "I am tracking that the JBCC response to the 39 questions is being coordinated by Brigadier General Fo and Colonel Cody." And that was sent by Colonel Riley. So at this point, that is all I have regarding the 39 questions.
Well, maybe let's see if we can have them come in and just talk about the gun range, and maybe have answers to the 39 questions.
But I do have other correspondents on the subject matter.
Okay.
Kind of jumping ahead, but.
Nope, go ahead.
This is from, I'll have the assistant distribute this to you. And we made one for the press, because kind of figured you'd want it.
You can have mine. I already read it. Brian here.
So this is, this is from the EPA, Boston, and this is being sent to General Keith from the Massachusetts National Guard. "In response to significant public concerns, including inquiries from the Massachusetts Congressional delegation and a written petition from a Cape Cod resident, EPA Region One has evaluated the applicability of a sole-source aquifer review for the proposed multipurpose machine gun range at Joint Base Cape Cod. Given the scope of this project, the level of public interest in the petition, EPA has elected to conduct this review. The purpose of this sole-source aquifer review is to evaluate whether the proposed project has a potential to contaminate the aquifer, creating a significant hazard to public health, and to provide recommendations to protect the aquifer. The sole-source aquifer review does not affect the ongoing cleanup work undertaken by the Joint Base Cape Cod pursuant to the Safe Drinking Water Act orders or the federal facility agreement under the Comprehensive Environmental Response, Compensation, and Liability Act, including the role of the Massachusetts Environmental Management Commission in overseeing future uses of the Joint Base Cape Cod ranges." The letter goes on, but that's the gist of it. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it, and we just became aware of this this afternoon.
It's another level of independent review that's much needed.
Yeah.
So it's a good sign.
So are you planning on the meeting on Thursday, or?
Doesn't look like there's a selectman interested, so.
Well, so, I don't know, I mean, it's, any information, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, is, it's better than none at this point. So if you are planning on attending, I would be happy to attend.
Would anybody else like to attend? Andy doesn't want to.
I ain't going.
And I, I can't. So David or Tom?
I could, I'm not going.
I know.
I'll bring you 39, I'll bring you 39 questions, just in case.
I thought you would like to go. That's.
Nope, I'm not playing the game.
All right. Would anyone else like to go?
You know, I can report back.
Was the date on that?
It's next Thursday.
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
You can go. Tom?
9 o'clock.
Yeah.
You'd like, you'd like to go?
I think so.
Okay. So Tom and John? Okay. Old business? New business? Discussion and action on draft number two of the October 18th, 2021 Annual Town Meeting. The ones that we have to do are the.
And Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'd just like to indicate that we did receive a memo from the Director of the Department of Public Works. The assistant will also send this out regarding a fiscal year '21 unpaid bill from the Northeast Resource Recovery Association. And there's an explanation in terms of why it came in late, but I would respectfully request that the board consider adding this to the unpaid bills under Article 8, I believe it is.
Make a motion, we add this unpaid bill to the Article 8.
Second.
Roll call, Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
One thing, that will be now sponsored by the Board of Selectmen due to the fact of the timing.
The timing, that's fine.
That's fine.
That's fine.
But otherwise, we don't have recommendations yet from planning on the zoning article, so.
No, well, they have in their hearing, I think.
Right.
Right.
So take it up next time.
Okay.
Right.
Lace on reports.
We don't want to talk about Joint Base again.
No, I don't.
Enough.
No, Tom? Okay. Now, executive session.
Town manager reports.
Oh, town manager updates.
There was the official drawl of the appointment of Andy to the Community Advisory Council and the Environmental Management Commission. There was a clerical error. We already had somebody appointed as of July 2021. Also, just as a reminder of the September 12 ceremony, during the ceasefire, the LAMAN ceremony, which is at 12:00, if anybody wants to participate or speak. And COVID-19 cases, as of Friday, there were four current cases. And in terms of the auction proceeds, those are now up to 65,000. And the only other thing that I did want to mention, because there's been some talk about it, and I don't want to get into a habit of responding to public comments, and I know the policy of the board, but in terms of the pickleball court, the proposal that is going to be.
Oh. Scared me.
The proposal that's going to be.
Hello?
Hold on, Pat.
Hold on, Pat.
Yep.
I think he thinks we're in executive session.
We're not in executive session yet.
All righty.
I just want to point out that there will be a proposal drafted by DPW for the purposes of modifying the facility. There will obviously be a price tag involved in that, and it's just something to consider, and then there has to be a funding source.
Do we go to CPC?
And it has to go through the whole process. It has to go through planning and, what is it, planning and construction committee?
Yes.
Then it also has to go through CPC.
Okay.
Or, excuse me, CIP. CPC, as Selectman Godley would be aware, could possibly decide to do something in terms of funding for recreational purposes. But this is just in the early stages, and the only thing I did say to a gentleman who was inquiring, there will be something to consider in the fall, but that's it.
Okay.
It's going to be reviewed, considered, and what potential action will or won't be taken, who knows? That's my report.
Make a motion, we go into executive session.
I declare that an open reading on the issues may have a detrimental effect on the litigation and negotiating position of the town.
All right, so I move the board go into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy regarding pending litigation on the multi-district opioid litigation, Mallinckrodt PLC, and all bankruptcy court proceedings. The board will not reconvene.
Thank you. Hi, Pat.
You got to take a vote.
Good evening.
Oh, we have to take a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Good morning.
Yes.